And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome everyone. It's nice to see a full house for a change in all the activity that's going on in the, in the room today. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening. First item on the agenda is recognition of some of the youth that are in the room today. The Mayor for the Day program has been ongoing for some time. We took a hiatus for a couple of years just because of life that happened, and we all know what that amounted to. But the Mayor for the Day information reads as follows. Keep Beatrice Beautiful and the City of Beatrice are here to recognize the 2022 Mayor of the Day winners in our great American cleanup recycling project. Between April 19th through the 22nd, 2022, second grade students at Lincoln Elementary, Paddock Lane Elementary School, St. Joseph's Catholic School, and St. Paul's Lutheran School collected items for recycling. Their recycling efforts helped keep Beatrice clean and beautiful. We are grateful for the second grade students who participate and acknowledge them for keeping our community clean and litter free. The Mayor for the Day winners will receive a certificate of appreciation from the Keep Beatrice Beautiful and the City of Beatrice, a coupon for a kid's meal from Runza, and a coupon for a Blizzard from East Court Dairy Queen. The Mayor for the Day winners are Miles Hadorn from Lincoln Elementary School, Evan Husa from Lincoln Elementary, Bristol Rohr from Lincoln Elementary, Theo Hutchinson from Paddock Lane Elementary School, Harlow Leishman from Paddock Lane Elementary School, Eli Oliver from Paddock Lane Elementary, Ella Haiki from St. Joseph's Catholic Church, and Tandon Weiss from St. Paul's Lutheran School. And with that, I would like each student to come forward and receive their certificate. The first one is Miles Hadorn. Somebody's got to be first, Miles. Look right at that lady right over there. She wants to take your picture, okay? The next is Evan Husa. Evan? She'll love this guy's hair. You can tell he's a baseball player. Bristol Rohr. Theo Hutchinson? Okay, we'll get that to Theo. Harlow Leishman. Harlow? Eli Oliver. Eli? Come on, Eli. Look, look excited. Right over there. Okay? Okay? All right. Thank you. The next on the list is Ella Haiki. Ella? Okay, thanks Ella. And the last is Tandon Weiss. Tandon? Again, thank you very much to all of the, I beg your pardon? Oh, sure, sure. Thank you all for participating in the recycling efforts and learning more about the program. Thanks to all the parents for bringing the students out tonight on such a kind of a not-so-nice evening. So we really appreciate it, and you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the City Council, and if you leave, we certainly understand. Let's give them a round of applause.
Well, there goes half of her.
Like a vacuum in here.
Okay, to continue the meeting, we've got a couple of proclamations that I'd like to read. And the first one is Drinking Water Week, May the 1st through the 7th, 2022. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas water is our most natural and valuable resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving as essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of our life, of our citizens, of the community. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to support high-quality drinking water from its source to consumer taps. And whereas we are all stewards of water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. Whereas the citizens of Beatrice are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore I stand worth Mayor of the City of Beatrice proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2022 as Drinking Water Week. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this second day of May 2022. And with us is our Water Superintendent, Steve Kelly. Steve, I'm going to present this to you.
First of all, thank you Mayor and Council, and also board of all gourds for recognizing the Water Department here in Beatrice. We are very fortunate that we have an adequate supply of drinking, safe drinking water that meets all the standards set by APA. I've been department head now for 32 years, and those 32 years, we had one minor hiccup of some coliform bacteria when they changed the rule. Other than that, we have not had a violation in 25-plus years. So we're very fortunate that we do have a sufficient supply and also a safe supply of drinking water for City Beatrice. I know what, people pretty much take water for granted, but that means we're doing our job. So if you turn that faucet on, I don't want you to have any second thoughts. So, so thank you.
Very good, Steve. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have a second proclamation. That proclamation is the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and that is May 1st through the 7th, 2022, and it reads as follows. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful for their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas professional municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerks through participation in the education program seminars, workshops, and annual meetings in their state, Providence, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore I stand worth Mayor of the City of Beatrice to recognize the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2022 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Aaron Sadoff, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this second day of May 2022. Aaron? All right. Could you say municipal clerks in that one more time? All right, let's continue with our agenda. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Purpose of the Consent Agenda is something that we will consider to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive in place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive in place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on May 18th, 2022 as on file in the City Clerk's Office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims. E1, approval of gauge area growth engage claim in the amount of $31,326.01. Item E2, approval of balance of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $142,677.60. Item F, approval of Bozwar report of claims in the amount of $70,273.33. Item G, approval of public funding request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $5,000 for the Homestead Days 2022 event. Item H, approval of Beatrice Plus application from the Beatrice Bullets Baseball Organization in the amount of $5,470 for the replacement of a storied shed at the West Scott Street Ballfields as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item I, termination of public funding request awarded to Beatrice on the Move Coalition on May 15th, 2019 in the amount of $2,611.25. Item J, resolution number 6881, approving a request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from 3rd Street to 19th Street on Saturday, June 25th, 2022, between 8:00 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. for the Beatrice Homestead Days Parade. Item K, resolution number 6882, granting the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce and their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon city property located in Charles Park, 5th Street between High Street and Ella Street, the alley to the south, end of the parking lot near the Carnegie Building, 5th Street between Ella Street and Court Street, 4th Street between Court Street and High Street, Beatrice Water Park, and Chautauqua Park as part of the annual Homestead Days event on the days of June 23rd, 2022 through June 26th, 2022. And resolution number 6883, appointing Laura McEl, uh, McEl, help me. Okay, that one. To the Community Development Authority. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Rick?
I will abstain from E1, please.
Okay. Gary?
Well, only because I don't know who she is, that's a pretty committee.
Okay, sure. Okay. So, Mr. McLean, all items except item L.
I move that all items on, listed on the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed on the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. And I'll take up the matter of item L.
I move that item L, listed under the Consent Agenda, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that we further discuss item L, and that's Laura McElravy. Okay?
Is she, I don't know, is she from here, or?
She worked in our Community Development Department for a period of time.
Okay.
With Rob Merrill.
She's had interest in serving on a board for a number of years. We had an opening at that particular spot. Trevor Lee obviously is vacating it with his move out to Carney, and so that's where the opening came in, and she had to express interest.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? And your vote, please. And item L is approved 8-0. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive the semi-annual report of the Citizens' Advisory Review Committee as provided by the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, RRS 1943.
So for our CARC hearing, usually we have their chairman here, but however, he is busy with family events, so he's nine milli make it, so I'll give his report for him. Our CARC oversees two different funds for us. One is the CBG revolving loan fund. As we've talked in the past, the state wants us to wrap that fund up and close it out. And so we did the downtown sidewalk program. It was probably the last thing that we did really try and get some of those dollars out of there. We have about $80,000 in cash currently available in that fund. We have one downtown sidewalk project that is currently underway. When that one gets wrapped up, what we're looking at are a couple of different projects. One would be the trail extension on Highway 136 between 24th and 26th Street. That's an eligible project. Another eligible project would be downtown, or handicap ramped anywhere in the community. That would be another type of eligible project. We have one outstanding loan, that's with Dog's Hut. They are current on their payments. Their balance is about $30,000. So you figure 80,000 in cash, 30,000 in the bank, gives you about 110, which is roughly the estimate for that particular trail project. So we'll look to see what we can get done there. On the LB840 fund, we've got about 540,000, excuse me, 880, I'm going to try this again. I have $584,000 in cash as of the end of March in that fund. We have nine loans that are outstanding, all of which are current. We've got about $768,000 that is currently loaned out. We do have one set of funds that we sent to revolve, or to the Rural Workforce Housing Fund, that's about $128,000. Remember, we, we joined that committee with SIN, we put some money, and we came by the LB840 fund. That loan there, that Rural Workforce Housing Fund, has been used twice in Beatrice. One for the construction of a new home, one for the rehab of a home. So we have seen those dollars flow back into here and be reused. But that's where you're at on your current LB840 funds as well.
So don't mean to put you on the spot, I know you were just doing the report, but if, if we never loaned out another dime, how far out is the, the longest loan that we've got?
The longest loan you have outstanding based upon what's there, I believe, is probably 10 years would certainly cover it. It might be closer to eight or nine, but 10 certainly would cover it.
I thought it was longer, so thanks.
No, most of them that we loaned are somewhere in that five to seven range is pretty typical.
You have the questions? Move it from the audience. Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:18 p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:18 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification MM to the redevelopment plan for the redevelopment area number eight, which is Porter Estates 2 Redevelopment Project.
So this application comes from Midwest Housing Initiative. In the past, where they were referred to often as Excel Development, they've got a couple of different subsidiaries that they use. This one's from Midwest Housing Initiative. Again, the site's 10th and Arthur Street. For those of you not familiar with streets, that's the side of the old hospital that was torn down a couple of years ago. They have built eight duplexes on those various lots that are there. They've built six single-family homes. They have four lots that are open. What they're coming back for at this point is to take two of those open lots and build two duplexes on them. So a total of two duplexes being built, leaving two lots remaining. Both of those duplexes would be for senior living, similar to all the other duplexes that they built prior to it. The main difference would be this one would not have the income restriction that the previous ones have had. So again, they're in applying for TIF. It's gone through planning and zoning, and they recommend approval. It's gone through CRA. They've recommended approval. It's back before you tonight. Assuming you recommend approval of it, it'll go to, back to CRA for their final approval and signature of the redevelopment agreement. I believe construction will happen sometime later this summer or fall, once they kind of get all their paperwork lined up and in place.
Questions from the audience? Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:20 p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:20 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is Resolution 6884, adopting Plan Modification MM to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number eight, Porter Estates 2 Redevelopment Project.
I move that resolution number 6884 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution number 6884 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen, from the audience?
Tobias, were you saying?
I beg your pardon?
Sorry, were these the two lots you said that were down to the, all the way to the west?
They are on the southwest portion of those lots, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Did you give them a nudge on the remaining two when we had this conversation with them?
They're, they go and apply for different federal funding that's out there, and so depending on what's available and what they think they can get accomplished, that's, I think they'll come back and obviously finish those last two off, but they'll get these two done first.
And they, and they've given you a pretty solid timeline. I know when they first started this, there was a little bit of a lag, and then they got it all done at once, but?
Yeah, again, it's basically, yeah, it's basically the federal paperwork that takes the longest to kind of work through all that stuff is their biggest hurdle. They've got a waiting list on, on the senior living, so you know, they've got an incentive to get them done and get them built. I think it's just a matter of getting through the federal paperwork.
Okay.
Who have the questions?
Oh, boy. When did we start doing this? Probably in 2018-ish, would be my guess.
Year after the hospital was, when they cut the ribbon on the hospital.
Somebody might know that question.
It's been 10 years ago, hasn't it? Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we started the process about two years after they cut the ribbon because we had, they had to take the hospital down, and then it was about a year after that. So you're probably six years in.
Yeah.
Okay, six years in.
Sure, absolutely.
Over and I success.
Any other comments from the audience? Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution 6884 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution, Resolution 6885 declaring the mayor and the City Council's support for the development of a creative district within the city.
I move that resolution number 6885 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution number 6885 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
I'm going to invite Michael and Morgan up here to explain the creative district. This is relatively new. I think it was created just a couple of years ago by the legislature. There are some advantages for it, most namely, it is an opportunity to get some additional grant funding, to do some marketing, some artwork, some of those types of things in your creative district. And so we've been working with Main Street, the Chamber's been involved with it, community players has been there helping out throughout all of this and trying to put what is a rather large application together. Luckily, Morgan has taken that on, and so I bless you.
All right. Well, thank you guys for inviting us to be here. And I guess first of all, as Tobias has already mentioned, introducing Morgan Fox on our team there at Main Street Beatrice. When I was here last time, you guys were asking when she might come and join us. And as Tobias said, this is a program that we've certainly been working on. Morgan is the designated administrator for this program, and so we're definitely excited to be working with the city and several other community partners to try to bring this to Beatrice. The Creative Arts District was something created by the legislature in the session previous to the one that just completed. And it's a way to leverage funding that really goes to a variety of things, from marketing of a community to historic building rehab, to things like murals and different other forms of art. And the grants are going to be capped out at $250,000 a year for successful in becoming a district. Right now, looking at it, the area that makes the most sense to be a district would be, for the most part, our downtown area, because they want a concentration of restaurants, bars, arts-based businesses, and, yep, even, even creative manufacturing and things like that. And so hopefully that gives you guys just a real broad overview of things. I know Morgan's provided you a nice handout, and she's got the answers to probably most of your questions, so we'll, we'll open it up to you guys.
How many other communities have been created a district like this?
Right now, I believe there's only one that has gone through the entire process, and that's Ashland. We've had a meeting with them already. They've been a great resource, answering any questions that we've had. There are a handful of other communities, especially in larger areas like Omaha and Lincoln, that are in the process, and they're a little further ahead than we are, but more are taking up the challenge.
So this is a relatively new process across the state, then?
Correct.
Yes.
Of the $250,000 available, is there, is that kind of a first-come, first-served basis? Is that kind of how that'll work?
So they actually approved several million dollars. I'm not sure the exact amount, but they approved, I think it was closer to 15 million, maybe 10 million, don't quote me on that, last legislative cycle, and then they actually approved, accessed even more funds this legislative cycle. And so right now, it looks like if you're a part of the program, you're guaranteed to have a grant in the first couple of years. Then they will be competitive going forward.
Tell us about the application process that you went through.
So the application, the initial step was submitting a letter of interest, which you have a copy on your, on the front of the map in your packet. After that, we had a meeting with Rachel Morgan at the Nebraska Arts Council, where we looked through our letter of interest. We talked through some steps that we've already gone through, talked about our district as a whole, and gave her our draft of the downtown map. She gave us the approval now to work on the workbook, which I have here with me. It's sizable, and we have begun splitting that up between community partners and ourselves. Once we have that submitted, then they will come down and do things like site visits, a community meeting, and then we work towards our...
Designation?
Designation, thank you.
And this certification is good for?
Five years.
Okay.
So Morgan, in a perfect world, what does this do for that area?
For this area, we have a lot of hopes and dreams.
Yep.
Initially, our focus is going to be on marketing, creating marketing, not only for our downtown area. It's the focus, but we can use it for the entire community, which is great. And then another area that we'd really like to look into is lighting, not only working on updating our Christmas lights and expanding that program downtown, but also taking creative lighting in our alleyways and turning them into passageways, which was also part of the University of Nebraska program with the Downtown Redevelopment Plan, which was part of their recommendation on our alleyways.
But then obviously going forward with grants of up to $250,000, if we're wanting to focus on streetscape and new plantings and things like that, we're wanting to really, again, try to leverage the business core that we have with our small businesses. This is a tool that will hopefully allow us to do that more effectively than we have in the past.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
We don't have any matching funds that has to be done with, with any of your, your, this is...
No, they are not matching funds, but they can be used as matching funds. So we can take this and leverage it for other grant funding.
But the city does not have to put any money in to match it. In fact, Main Street has graciously taken on much of the administrative work in this, so.
And the startup administrative cannot be reimbursed, but going forward with the larger grants, administrative costs can be covered as part of the grants themselves. And I would be amiss if I don't mention some of our initial partners on this. So just to real quick mention that, obviously, you guys, the City of Beatrice, will really appreciate you with that, with this resolution here tonight. The Beatrice Chamber of Commerce, community players, and then Jeff and Brenda Davis. Brenda's on the Nebraska Arts Council Board, and she's been instrumental in helping move this forward as well.
Just for the sake of information for the audience, the amount of money on the initial application, not initial application, but the initial approval is?
$10,000.
Up to?
And then we'll be getting... And then, we'll be get $10,000 for completing the certification, and then we're immediately eligible for grants up to $250,000 annually.
Annually?
Annually.
Perfect.
We think so, too.
Any other questions?
Good luck. It sounds fantastic.
Yeah, I would agree.
Anxious to see how it turns out.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Another step in the right direction.
Any other discussion? Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6885 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6886, executing the donation agreement between the city and the Kiwanis Club regarding the donation from the Kiwanis Club to be used for the construction, operation, and maintenance improvements located at Hannibal Park.
I move that Resolution Number 6886 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6886 be passed and adopted.
Today, we have a very good partnership to bring forward to this board with the gracious donation from the Kiwanis Club. What we have here is a donation agreement. They've pledged $40,000 to be used at Hannibal Park for improvements. The agreement calls for $30,000 be paid by June 1st of this year, and a $10,000 be paid by June 1st of next year. Again, all those improvements will get made out of Hannibal Park, and then you'll see the following resolution is for naming the field, Field One, which if anybody's not familiar with Hannibal Park, Field One is the main field out there with the high school plays. It's the one we just made into the championship field. That field then will be known as Kiwanis Field moving forward.
Questions? Do we have somebody from the Kiwanis Club that wants to make a presentation?
Reluctantly.
Got a big golf check? All right.
You guys got the short straw, huh?
Oh, come on, Amber. You know you like to talk.
Many Kiwanians have worked hard to raise funds over, for a hundred-year celebration project, and how they did it was just as important. They have rolled up their sleeves, sold lots of peanuts, delivered phone books, and worked countless hours at Medecus tournaments, helping kids grow and succeed at the heart is what we do. I'm honored the Beatrice Noon Kiwanis Club has pledged to donate $40,000 to the Beatrice Hannibal Park Field One upgrades known as the Kiwanis Field. Today, we present a check for the amount of $30,000. The Beatrice Noon Kiwanis is happy to help by contributing to this large-scale project. Kiwanians have a smile so big that you can say it stretches more than 100 years. We would like to give a special thank you to Mark Pethod and his assistant in helping coordinate this project.
You have a smile, 100. I haven't seen yours. There you go. I ain't giving away money.
That's why, that's why you look grumpy.
Runs against my profession.
Thank you very much for doing this, though.
You bet.
Greatly appreciate it.
You like a chip, sir?
Yeah.
Golf check? I want to know why, I want to know why Ross has a different... Ross has a different shirt.
I won't answer that.
What's that?
I have two shirts, and my wife picked this one out for me. She said it was later.
Yeah, you should all come up.
I just get to be present for sure. I can't wait to work.
That's a good deal. Need to. How many teams did they have out there this weekend?
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one teams?
That's a lot.
Tell us when you want to come back, John.
I'm ready for you.
You ready?
All right.
Okay.
Can't have it back, Roger.
Yes, sir.
We were supposed to also thank the city for our reimbursement of some of the expenses that the city does every year for the Medecus tournament. That saves a lot of money, so we can pass that on to the association that brings in these high school teams to play.
Very good.
So they said, please mention that to the group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to vote?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6886 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6887 declaring that the baseball field known as Field One, located at Hannibal Park, shall be known as Kiwanis Field.
I move that Resolution Number 6886 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6886 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
Hey, the girls enjoyed playing out there this weekend.
You what?
The girls enjoyed playing out there this weekend, so they're already up using the field, and it looks beautiful. If you haven't been out there, take a look. Swim by the trail.
Very nice. Thank you again. All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6887 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6888 declaring that the trailhead lying just south of Perkins Street and west of Highway 77 shall be known as Gage County Foundation Trail Depot.
I move that Resolution Number 6888 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6888 be passed and adopted.
So, back in December, we had the Gage County Foundation here, and remember that that time they brought in their big check and donated $50,000 to be used at that trailhead located at 6th and Perkins, or by the Dempsters area, depending on how you know your geography. So we've been trying to come up with a name, and we came up with the Gage County Foundation Trail Depot. And so, the resolution denies and named that, that trailhead, that name, and moving forward, that's what it'll be called. Mayor's been down there planting a tree, the bathroom's installed, the parking lot's been poured. I know Pethod and his guys are working on landscaping now, and we've got some grants out there for the stormwater detention area to be built. So if you, if you think the parking lot holds water, it does, because the idea is for it to drain off into the stormwater detention area, which is coming. No, it's not poorly designed or constructed as the way it was designed. There's another step coming, but that's, some of the improvements have been made down there already, and we are working with getting the rest of that area cleaned up.
Looks really good.
It really does. I would agree. All right. Any other comments, questions, discussion? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6888 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to establish salaries and compensation for various city and Board of Public Works union employees.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-9. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given Number 22-9. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance Number 22-9 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-9 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-9 by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-9 be passed and approved.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance Number 22-9 be passed and approved.
We're required by law every year to pass a salary ordinance. We passed one earlier for non-union employees. We were waiting to get all the union contracts signed and settled. Now that we've completed that, we brought back before you, your salary ordinance for the union employees. It matches all of the various salary increases that were in their union contracts.
Questions, comments from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance Number 22-9 has been passed and approved. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? All right, seeing none, we'll go into discussions and reports. And first up is the Beatrice Humane Society, and we have several members of the Beatrice Humane Society with us. So if you would, Gina, just name an address, please, just for the record.
My name is Gina Heckey. My home address is 414 Goren's Avenue, Beatrice. Wal Carley is giving you those. I think this was included in your packet as well, but in case you needed it. I am the board president for the Humane Society. The only reason I am coming today is to give you guys a little bit of FaceTime. So many of you are probably familiar with John Reitma. He was our board president for...
Ever.
For a very long time. Our board, much like our organization, has undergone quite a bit of change over the last few years, really probably since we built that new building on the location that we're currently established. And so, as we've kind of grown, and as the community has supported us, and as this group has supported us, we've had some growing pains, but we've also had the opportunity to expand some services and make some changes that we're pretty happy with and excited about. A couple of the, the big focuses for us are just some strategic planning around service expansion, professionalism, continuing to be a resource to the community, both for our community partners, pet owners. I think when we first started, we were a very, very small shelter that really meant to serve stray animals and owner surrenders in our community. And we've been able to, through a lot of different resources, expand on that. We really are kind of a destination for pet owners. We're a bit of an economic driver now with the pets that we're able to move through our facility. And it also is really attractive to people moving to our area to have a pet-friendly community, which is what we've tried to develop. So I won't take any more time unless anyone has questions for me, particularly from a board member perspective. I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I will let Carley give you all of the good operational details that she can.
Okay. Thanks, Gina. Carly?
Thank you. My name's Carly Fittis. I'm the executive director out at the Beatrice Humane Society. I've been there now about three years. It's been a lot of fun, a lot of growth, a lot of change even in that three years, but it's all been for the betterment of our animals in our community, and, and, and doing that has been very rewarding. So just to kind of give you guys a little bit of a status update, 2021 was our biggest year yet. Each year since 2014 or 2015, we've grown every year with the number of adoptions that we've done, the number of reclaims that we've done, like trying to help more animals through our shelter. And in 2021, we had a 98.2% save rate, which means we euthanized only 1.8% of all of the animals that came through our front door, no matter what condition they walked in with, or got carried in with, or came in in a box with. It doesn't matter. All of those get counted in there. And we only had to euthanize 1.8% of all of those animals. So that number is very large. I will say, I can't tell you of another shelter in Nebraska that even comes close to that number. There are some small private rescues that do come close to that number, maybe even a few that exceed that number, but not with the same community focus that we have. We have a very strong focus on making sure that we're only placing safe and sane and healthy animals back into our community. So we aren't going to be placing dangerous animals back out into our community, while some very small shelters may, may opt to go that route, and that's not something that we support. So we've been very fortunate to have a great community that helps us find adoption outcomes for many of our animals. In 2021, we had 1,438 animals walk through our front doors of our shelter. Of those, many were reclaimed to owners, many were adopted, very few had to be euthanized or passed away while in our care. So it's pretty cool that we're able to help that many animals. And those animals are cats, dogs, rabbits, guinea pigs, lizards. Oh, gosh, we've had, we've had a variety. Had a couple of hawks last year. We've had some bats. You never know what the phone calls are going to be, but we, if there are ways that we can help, we do so. So just a little bit of information for you guys about, you know, the strays and the animals that, you know, I've kind of grown here. We took in 359 total strays from Beatrice, including 230 cats, 127 dogs, a rabbit and a rat. Yes, a rat, stray rat. It was great. It was a fun day. These animals were provided comfort and food, any emergency medical care necessary. Most of them found adoptions. Some of them found their, their way back home again. A few of them found other rescues, but the focus is always to find a live placement for all of those animals. We did also complete 13 police seizure and bike quarantines, so we're also taking care of those for the community as well, and working to get those placed back into those homes if it's safe to do so with Tobias and Taylor and a multitude of people to help with those processes. So of those 359 animals, 101 were reunited with their owners, 37 passed away or were euthanized because of untreatable medical or behavioral conditions. Nine were transferred to other rescues, and 212 completed their stray hold and were adopted out through our, our shelter, through our no-kill mission. We were able to reunite 67.8% of all of our stray dogs that came into our shelter from Beatrice back with their owners. That is also an unusually large number. I can't say as if there is any other shelter that's able to reunite that many back home. We have focused really hard on making sure that we're microchipping animals and that we're getting back out into our community to make sure that if there's owners, we're finding them and getting these animals back out of our shelter, which allows us resources to help those that can't get back home. So it's a changing of, changing of our resources from, you know, just adopting out whatever walks through our front doors instead of trying to get them back home, and instead allowing those to go back home, and then working on helping other animals as well. So I did want to mention our PetSmart partnership, which is up in Lincoln. We do do, last year, we did 600 adoptions out of our PetSmart, two PetSmart locations in Lincoln. And I always get asked, like, why, why are you doing adoptions in Lincoln? Why does that matter? And the fact is, is that we took in over 400 cats locally here in Beatrice, but we only had 150 adoptions through our shelter here in Beatrice for cats. It's a deficit of about 250 animals that if we didn't have this partnership to be able to outcome cats, we would have a real challenge as a, as a community to maintain that no-kill mission. So it's a way for us to find live outcomes for cats. It's also, honestly, it's a pretty, pretty big economic boom for us as well. They offer grants and programs for us to be able to help our animals within our shelter make it to adoption and make it through their adoption program. So last year, I think that was almost $12,000 worth of grants that they awarded us to be able to place animals up there. So that's a huge thing for our community, even though it may not be just our community, but also it is helping our community in the same token. I think that was most of the things I needed to cover. Sorry, I kind of ended a little bit awkwardly there. If you guys have any questions, I, I would love to welcome any questions at this time.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah. I thought, I think you guys do a great job on social media. Does that help you guys place a lot of these animals, I'm assuming?
Oh, absolutely. We've actually, in the last year, really built our social media. We've probably gained about 10% followers in all of our platforms, which in turn has resulted in a few adopters driving from as far away as Minnesota. I had an adopter fly-in from, from Wisconsin last year to be able to adopt a dog. You know, those, those are sometimes local animals that we can't easily place locally, but if somebody is that eager to get them wherever they're at, that they're willing to make that kind of commitment to these animals, absolutely. It's a huge driver of people coming to our community. We, we see, this last year, we've seen a lot more movement from people from Lincoln and Omaha, even down into Kansas, Manhattan and Topeka, Kansas City, coming to Little Beatrice in the middle of nowhere, Nebraska, to adopt animals. And so, it's really cool to be able to be that kind of organization that people are striving to engage with.
Very good. Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you very much. Thanks for everything that you do.
Welcome, Gina.
Okay. Our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on May 16th in these chambers and a work session on May 23rd. And with that, Mr. McLean, I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
I move that Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:48 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that we go into closed session at 7:48 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.